...enforcement agency, which would be our police department, approach the topic of noise in the town. They're not going out like some vigilantes or with guns blaring to knock everybody riding a motorcycle or revving their engine on their Corvette and ride them a ticket. These gentlemen, if somebody's exceeding the noise level, they stop by and say, hey, basically, you know, knock it off, you're too loud. And they try and work with most everybody the best they can. But there is, as somebody mentioned, I think, a while ago, there is that 1 percent, the gentleman that did public speaking, there is that 1 percent that just go, forget it, you know, I'm gonna do it anyway. And the police department now has a little bit more in their arsenal to deal with those people. So I don't necessarily see that there's going to be a major change in the way we handle noise here. I think the signs that we've discussed, if the mayor and the Public Works agree to put noise ordinance, you know, enforced, it's coming in, may help or not, we'll see how that goes. But we definitely, as a group and the citizens said, we agreed with the mayor on taking the ride quietly down. We did agree with that. And we was hoping that, again, with the signage, which is the only real thing that goes to the public about noise here, other than what the Chamber and the CAPC are going to do at conventions and what is in the visitor guide now, they've changed the wording for this year about, you know, we're kind of a canyon area and we're concerned about noise, but it's very gently covered.
Mr. McLuhan.
Well, Mr. Mitchell, if I understand you correctly, what you just said, you said that the policing is not going to change and the only thing that really is going to make a difference is the signage, which the mayor has the right and privilege to put that up as he sees fit. Those were your words.
Those are my words, and let me add back to it, though, to clarify. It allows the police department to have a local ordinance that's expanded to when they write the ticket and they use it, it's here, they don't have to use the state statute one as much. Money's money.
There is still a noise ordinance strictly enforced sign out by the cemetery.
Is there still one of those?
There's still, it's still there and always has been there. And right underneath it, it says, no jake breaking for the trucks. Mr. McLuhan.
I'm Mr. DeVito. Item number five, "It shall be unlawful to," "to operate any machinery or equipment outdoors so as to emit loud noise which is disturbing to the quiet comfort or repose of any reasonable person." I guess that becomes a subjective appraisal of a lawnmower, a weed eater, a leaf blower.
If a neighbor calls the police department to say that there is some equipment being operated and it's an hour before sunrise or an hour after sunrise or an hour before sunset, and the police department comes out and says, would you please stop? Yes.
Let me read that back again. "To operate any machinery or equipment outdoors so as to emit loud noise which is disturbing to the quiet comfort or repose of any reasonable person," or, "earlier than one hour after sunrise or later than one hour before sunrise." So that's an either/or.
Yeah, that's...
So that doesn't read as what you just said to me.
So we would have to take the word "or" out.
Yes.
Any reasonable person, "earlier than one hour," it's the word "or" needs to come out.
Okay.
That's what happened.
All right. Those little words can trip you up.
Big time.
Yes.
Big time. And we also have two of the noise ordinance committee members that have been on the committee for the whole time, Steve Beecham and Fatima Tower. And we all know that Mrs. Fatima has the Pied Piper and is a major proponent and supporter of a particular segment of the population that are guests in this town. And Mr. Beecham has been an excellent, excellent representative of, I think, of the citizens and the people that have been long-term. And if anybody has any questions, I would really, would appreciate taking the opportunity to talk to them besides me.
Yes, sir.
There's another issue relating to, well, let's see, item, under section B, item eight.
Which one?
Last page, item eight. "Any other noise resulting from activities of a temporary duration permitted by law and for which a permit has been granted by the city, provided that the noise is produced with the conditions and limits stated in the permit." That relates to the, basically, a waiver for bars and restaurants during festival weekends to operate beyond the 10 o'clock. That needs another look at it because the intent of the law was to allow the extension of hours on music-related weekends like Jazz Fest or Blues Fest or Bluegrass. And that needs to be firmed up because some things are calling themselves festivals and people are getting extended permits for basically anything that's called a festival. So we have to firm that up to be specific that the exemptions are only for music-related weekends such as blues, jazz, and not any weekend that calls itself a festival.
How about a city-approved festival? Does that work?
I think it needs to be just a little bit, some city-approved, take May Fine Arts Festival, for example. By that definition of a city-approved festival, you could get a permit to extend your hours of amplified music for 30 days.
City-approved weekend festival?
Well, I think we specifically need to list those very few festivals in this.
And add his new ones crop up.
Yeah.
Mr. DeVito.
As to that paragraph eight that you were referring to, if you read that strictly, "an activity of a temporary duration," would also be a backyard picnic, a backyard wedding, some sort of a political reception or an event. Are we suggesting that anybody who wants to do anything in their backyard that might create noise or involve a crowd has to get a permit from City Hall before they can do it?
No, it says for...
Because we're saying here, permitted by law, for which a permit has been granted.
We have nothing in the city code that requires you to get a permit for backyard barbecue.
Well, what I'm asking is, is this paragraph doing that? Is that what this paragraph is doing?
No, it's saying, only for permitted, city permitted. That's what the intention is, only for city permitted.
It doesn't say only, it just says for which a permit has been granted. It doesn't say city permitted events.
Says, "a temporary duration permitted by law."
Permitted by law.
Yeah, but permitted by law, you're certainly permitted by law, have a wedding in your backyard or a reunion or a party.
No, you're interpreting it differently.
Well, I'm just looking at how a court of law would interpret it. I mean, it's, if you're not saying what you mean, if what you're referring to is only events that are sponsored by the city or the CAPC or something, that's not what you're saying here. You're saying any activity of temporary duration, and you're suggesting that it has to have a permit or a permit has to be granted. I think you're, maybe no one would make an issue of, but that is what it says. If you read it strictly, that is what it says. A neighbor could complain and have somebody arrested for having a party in their backyard because they don't have a permit that's granted for it.
There's no process for a permit for a private function, so a permit's not needed.
It doesn't say you don't need a permit, and just because we don't have a way to grant a permit doesn't negate this part of this law.
Mr. Mayor.
You understand what I'm saying here. I think we're getting ourselves a can of worms.
Mr. Mitchell, he's...
And there's another, then there's, as long as I have the floor, section A is another thing I want to address here. I mean, consider that because you're not saying what you mean here and you're getting yourself into trouble by wording it that way. Now, in section A, 7.1614, paragraphs one and paragraphs two are automatically against the law by paragraph five. You can't operate any machinery, equipment outdoors or so forth. It says here, it's against the law to operate any machinery, paragraph one, that might, you know, interfere with the comfort, repose, health, peace, safety of reasonable persons. Well, a reasonable person would object to having a lawnmower outside their bedroom window at 8:00 in the morning. And section five then contradicts one and two because it says that you can operate anything one hour after sunrise or one hour before sunset. You see, you're contradicting yourself if paragraphs one and two are contradicted by paragraph five. Okay? And one other thing, is there anywhere in this ordinance that claims jurisdiction? Is this just within the city limits of Eureka Springs?
This is an amendment to an existing ordinance.
Okay, does the existing ordinance, which I have not read, does it claim jurisdiction? Because what I'm referring to is, are we claiming jurisdiction not only by the land area in the city? Or are we also claiming jurisdiction over the air, over the city? Because I'm referring to helicopter flyovers. We don't have anything in this ordinance that prohibits a helicopter from flying over the city limits because we're not claiming jurisdiction.
We need the law somewhere that gives us airspace, but I forget what the...
There is a statute in the code book that deals with helicopters.
We used to have one, but I'm not sure we have...
Other than medical helicopter.
What's your question, again, Joyce?
My question is, are we claiming jurisdiction of, for instance, 2,000 feet vertically over the city limits because of helicopter noise?
The mayor had an answer to that.
There, I'll have to go back and look, but I believe there was a statute in our code book that already deals with helicopters that are not medical helicopters or law enforcement helicopters. It mainly deals with private business and privately-owned helicopters landing within the city. It doesn't allow that.
Well, I know there used to be because I wrote it, but I think that that was replaced by another noise ordinance that was passed later.
Very well being.
The FAA limits, you can't control 2,000 feet.
It's 500 feet.
500.
Is it 300 or not? It looks to be 500.
Last time I looked in the private policy.
Whatever, we're gonna have a problem with helicopter flyovers, so we don't deal with it. Anyhow, okay, those are what, those are the faults that I found with this ordinance.
Next. Mr. Mitchell.
Oh, let's just go for it. I'd make a motion that we assign an ordinance number to this ordinance and have its first reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There's no real suspension.
610, I mean, 510.
Okay. I'm sorry, what was it again?
510.
Ordinance number?
The vote was 510.
Okay, yeah.
Sorry.
Yes. That's the ordinance number.
2209.
The ordinance number will be 2209.
Yeah.
Excuse me. An ordinance adding a section to chapter 7.16, "Noise," of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code to address vehicles, machinery, and equipment and sound-producing devices. Whereas the city council has determined that the Eureka Springs Municipal Code does not adequately address the issue of excessive noise from vehicles, machinery, and equipment and sound-producing devices. Whereas the city council has determined to add a section to the Eureka Springs Municipal Code to address excessive noise from vehicles, machinery, and equipment and sound-producing devices. And, whereas addressing excessive noise from vehicles, machinery, and equipment and sound-producing devices will protect, preserve, and promote the health, safety, welfare, peace, and quiet of the residents and visitors of the city of Eureka Springs through the reduction, control, and prevention of unreasonably loud sounds and noises that unreasonably disturb, injure, or endanger the comfort, repose, health, peace, or safety of reasonable persons or Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that section one, the Eureka Springs Municipal Code is hereby amended to add the following definitions to section point, 7.16.01 definitions. Equipment or machinery means any type of motorized power equipment, lawn mowers, leaf blowers, weed cutters, wood chippers, gas-powered or electrical-type motors or motorized power tools. Modified exhaust system means any exhaust system in which the original noise abatement devices have been removed, altered, or replaced to produce more noise. Motor vehicle means any vehicle which is self-propelled by mechanical power such as passenger cars, trucks, truck trailers, semi-trailers, campers, motorcycles, mopeds, or any other vehicle regulated by state law. Sound-producing device means a radio, television, digital media player, loudspeaker, sound amplifier, musical instrument, or any other machine or device for producing sound. Section two, the Eureka Springs Municipal Code is hereby amended to add the following section to chapter 7.16, "Noise." 7.16.14, motor vehicles, machinery, and equipment and sound-producing devices. A, "It shall be unlawful to," "make, cause, or continue any loud, unnecessary, unnatural, or unusual noise, or any noise that annoys, disturbs, injures, or endangers the comfort, repose, health, peace, and safety of reasonable persons at any time, day or night. Or, intentionally create noise that is of a volume, frequency, or pattern that prevents, disrupts, injures, or endangers the health, safety, welfare, prosperity, comfort, or repose of reasonable persons after being requested to stop by a law enforcement officer, or operate any motor vehicle which causes noise as a result of a modified exhaust system or as a result of rapid acceleration, deceleration, engine revving, causing tire squeal, sliding or skidding, throttling, blipping, or racking of the throttle, or, except as used for warning purposes, to use, operate, or sound any horned or signaling device on any motor vehicle for any unreasonable period of time, or operate any machinery or equipment outdoors so as to emit loud noise which is disturbing to the quiet comfort or repose of any reasonable person earlier than one hour after sunrise or later than one hour before sunset. Or, inter-residential district, to play, use, operate, or allow to be played, used, or operated, a sound-producing device in such a manner that the sound or noise produced can be heard outside the immediate premises where it is being produced and is an annoyance to a reasonable person or persons. B, the following uses and activities shall be exempt from the provisions of this section: non-amplified crowd noises resulting from legal activities. And two, noises of safety signals or warning devices used for warning purposes. And three, noises resulting from an authorized emergency fire or police vehicle when responding to an emergency call, acting in a time of an emergency, or in connection with official police or fire department business. And noises resulting from emergency work. And five, reasonable noises made by churches and schools. And six, noises resulting from burglar alarms and other warning devices when properly installed and maintained, provided that the cause for such alarm or warning device sound is investigated and the alarm or warning device is turned off within a reasonable period of time. And seven, noises associated with equipment or animals lawfully utilized by persons with disabilities to accommodate their disability. And eight, any other noise resulting from activities of a temporary duration permitted by law and for which a permit has been granted by the city, provided that the noise is produced within the conditions and limits stated in the permit. Section three, that provisions of this ordinance are hereby declared to be separable, and if any provision shall for any reason be held illegal or invalid, such holding shall not affect the validity of the remainder of this ordinance. Section four, all ordinances and solutions and parts thereof in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
Mr. DeVito.
I'd love to approve ordinance number 2209 on its first reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
42.
420.
All right, moving right along. 420.
Yes.
Next is number six, resolution number 636, temporarily removing Sweeney Alley from park jurisdiction and allowing one-year use amended. What should we discuss?
So moved. Second.
Close open. That would be, remember, Mr. Birdman.
Yes, Mr. Attorney, have you had a chance to see the amended, or did you provide the amendment?
I told the clerk the day after that we had accidentally used the wrong term, as "sore" as opposed to "lessy." And she prepared it simply, we need to change it so the city's not responsible for building crosswalks.
Okay.
Between two pieces of private property.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 636 as amended.
Second.
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thanks, sir. Moves us on to new business. First is resolution for state aid for repaving. What should we discuss?
So moved.
Close open. Basically, all this is, is a standard resolution from the state when they do the state aid paving. The city has no financial obligations in this at all, other than letting them come in and doing it, tolerating the traffic for a little while. Yes, sir.
Don't have to define the project to be done.
They're already defined, yeah. It's gonna be Pivot Rock Road from...
It don't have to be defined in this.
No, sir, they don't, no. No. And then Passion Plate Road. Those are the only two. Mr. Mitchell?
Make a motion, we assign the resolution a number and...
Passive.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay.
Resolution number will be 637. A resolution expressing the willingness of the city of Eureka Springs to utilize state aid street monies for the following city projects, Eureka Springs overlay. Whereas the city of Eureka Springs understands that state aid street program funds are available for certain city projects at the following participating ratios. Reconstruction and resurfacing in the work phase, preliminary engineering, state aid percent is 100, the city percent payout is zero. For construction of city projects in the work phase, right away, state aid will contribute nothing, city contributes 100%. The utilities, state aid is zero, the city contribution is 100%. Construction, state aid is 100%, the city contribution is zero. For construction engineering, the state aid percent is 100, and the city contribution would be zero. City projects programmed but not led to contract, this covers all phases, the state aid contribution would be zero, and the city's contribution would be 100%. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that section one, the city will participate in accordance with its designated responsibilities in this project. Section two, the mayor or his designee is hereby authorized and directed to execute all appropriate agreements and contracts necessary to expedite the construction of this city project. Section three, the city agrees upon completion of the project to assume the maintenance of the right-of-way by city forces and/or others, including utilities and individuals, in accordance with the prevailing Arkansas State Highway and Transportation Department regulations. Section four, the city pledges its full support and hereby authorizes the Arkansas State Highway and Transportation Department to initiate action to implement this project.
Just so you know, this, the amount that they're allowing us is up to $250,000 on these two projects. And if there is any left over...
Great, thank you.
From Pivot Rock and Passion Plate, then we'll pick another smaller road, they'll work that out with Duane and go from there, according to that. All right, thank you. Okay. Moves us on to number two, under new business, ordinance vacating portion of Sweeney Alley. What should we discuss?
So moved.
Second.
Close open, Mr. DeVito.
I would move to assign this ordinance a number and place it on its first reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
The ordinance number will be 2210.
Oh, well.
What was it?
It sounded like you're about...
2210.
Down for the count, anyway. We'll read this. All right. Ordinance number 2210, an ordinance vacating an opening, I'm sorry, an unopened portion of Sweeney Alley. Whereas the city council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has reviewed the petition of the adjoining landowners to vacate the area defined by the following legal descriptions. Always love these. Sweeney Alley, lying between lot six and lot seven in block 171 in the Riley and Armstrong survey to the city of Eureka Springs, Carroll County, Arkansas, and being more particularly described as follows. Commence at the northwest corner of said lot seven for the point of beginning, thence north 17 minutes, is that correct?
Degrees.
17 degrees.
Minutes, seconds.
One minute and 42 seconds. West 17.21 feet, thence south 85 degrees, that's what it looks like. 85 degrees, 16 minutes and 8 seconds. East 84.57 feet, thence south 7 degrees, 30 minutes, 34 seconds. West 16 feet, thence north 85 degrees, 16 feet, 8 inches.
16 minutes.
16 feet.
16 minutes.
16 minutes, okay, yeah. Yeah, this is harder than I thought it'd be. And 8 seconds, west 77.41 feet to the point beginning containing 0.03 acres more or less. And whereas section 1444, 1042 of the Arcell Code annotated, allows the city council to vacate certain streets. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that section one, the sections described above are hereby vacated and title is hereby vested in fee simple in the adjoining landowners for the sum of $0 per landowner.
I'd love to approve ordinance number 2210 on its first reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? What should we carry? Okay. Sticking to everything. All right. Next will be a resolution for funding of the North Main Music Park stage. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Since this is kinda my kid here, let me tell you what's going on. We're about to construct a, construct a permanent stage in the corner of the North Main Music Park directly behind... Main Music Park directly behind the, the new restaurants, so we, we can have events, musical events, acting, drama, whatever, in the park. This, the five thousand dollars will let us build it and take out two trees that one is about to come up, the root ball is where we need to do the construction, the other one is hollow and in the path of the, any entertainment committing from the stage. This will also include the tree removal. Yes.
We obviously have the money, or you wouldn't be asking for it. The five thousand is.
Fund capital improvement, yeah, because this will be a permanent structure.
Yeah.
It won't, it won't be temporary. Ms. Snyder.
Is this, well, if I remember correctly, didn't there used to be a really old stage there?
Have no idea.
Okay.
Maybe thinking of Harmon Park.
Oh, yeah, I am, thank you.
What, what brought, brought this, I mean, this was this always?
Arts council.
I understand the art council, but was this been something that's been planned for a long time? I really don't.
Yes, we've been trying to.
At this point in time, I don't see the need for it.
Well, that's up to you, but we have been trying to develop that North Main area for a long time. We just made it a music park, and now we're trying to make it where we can actually have events in that music park. So, that's what the money's for, to build a stage. Music and drama and acting, whatever you wanna call it, it's, it'll be available to them ever.
We do have one like that at Harmon Park that, that has not gotten a lot of use.
It's 'cause Harmon Park's out of the way. This is right on North Main.
Oh.
Mr. Mitchell.
Well, since we have a very nice lighted ADA compliant sidewalk that goes all the way out there, and we have restrooms out there, it makes sense that we continue to improve and develop that area of the city so that people can meander out that way along that sidewalk, I make a motion that we assign this resolution a number.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Stand by.
The resolution number will be six-three-eight, a resolution amending the adopted 2014 budgets for the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has determined that the 2014 fiscal budget should be amended. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Section one, that the city is constructing a platform stage at North Main Park in the amount of five thousand dollars. Section two, that the funds shall be allocated for the purchase of the platform stage and paid from the capital improvement fund. Section three, upon passage of this resolution, all changes will be entered into the general ledger.
Okay. Very good. We should start construction on this week. We have an event in the park slated for the twenty-fourth.
Mr. Mayor, what might that event be?
Music, music in the park for made fine arts festival.
Okay.
Okay, moves us to number four, resolution for.
Storage.
For storage units to be placed.
Make a motion to discuss.
Okay.
Second.
Floor's open.
Mr. Mayor, could you sort of counsel what this is all about?
This kinda goes hand in hand with the ordinance you're about to read for the, the city, new, new city shop. We wanna order four of the twenty-foot storage boxes, they're called Conex boxes, which are shipping containers, they're solid metal, weigh about five thousand pounds apiece. According to the company, that should last us twenty-five to thirty years under normal use. Basically, what we're gonna use these for is replacing everything out of the old city shop when we deconstruct, put it in those, and the good thing about the, having four containers is we can put any container in any place in the city that we need to have one for storage, extra storage. They'll be ours to have, and, and they'll be, they'll be permanent, I wanna say structures, which they're kind of a structure, but they're also mobile.
Five thousand pounds?
Yes, yes.
What was the size of them?
They're twenty footers, actually nine point, nine point ten inches, but twenty footers. And we're getting them all as close to the same color as we can, so they look like, you know, the cluster. Basically for storage. Mr. Mitchell.
I make a motion that we assign resolution a number and pass it.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Do you have a copy of it?
Yes, I do, sorry. I thought you had one. I'll just read it for you.
Uh, six-three-nine.
Resolution amending the adopted 2014 budgets for the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has determined that the 2014 fiscal budget should be amended. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Section one, that the city is in need of four storage containers at the total cost of eleven, eleven thousand seven hundred dollars. Section two, that the funds shall be allocated for purchase of the storage containers and paid from the capital improvement fund. Section three, upon passage of this resolution, all changes will be entered into the general ledger. All right, okay, thank you. All right. Last item that I have on the new business agenda is an ordinance before you to waive competitive bidding for the construction of the new city shop building for the City of Eureka Springs Public Works Department.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Floor's open. Ms. Snyder.
What new building?
I know nothing about. Mr. Mayor, could you tell us about this, please?
Okay. I don't know how old the city shop is that exists now.
On the highway?
On the highway. When it was constructed, it was constructed as a pole barn, there's no metal in it, it's solid wood, right now it's solid decaying wood. It was, it looked like it was put up rather hastily. The inside of the building is completely covered with exposed fiberglass insulation. If you go out there and look at it, it looks like there's been a coating of something over it, but it's actually exhaust fumes, and it's black. But, that is where the insulation has not chosen to fall off of, because the adhesive used wasn't out of permanent adhesive, and there's just bald spots on, on the walls, on the ceiling, on the, on the roof, you name it. Let me just invite you to go out and look at the city shop building, and you'll shake your head like, my gosh, these guys work with nothing out here. What, what the money consists of, and let me go through this kinda briefly with you, is Floyd Construction and Sales and Construction, Buryville, Arkansas, does metal steel buildings, they're steel metal buildings. I contacted them and got an estimate of a one-hundred-foot by fifty-foot by twenty-foot, that means a hundred long, fifty wide, twenty high, for an estimated cost of ninety thousand. And that ninety thousand includes a new four-inch reinforced slab with the, with the building, which has four bay doors, three entry doors, three windows, and is completely insulated with the bay doors hung. The only thing that's not included with the ninety thousand is the, the plumbing, electric, water, and power. So that's why the other thirty-five thousand is thrown in there, so we can get all that done too. We will have to put a shower in there, in the bathroom, which there is one in there now, for any kind of exposure to, to fuel petroleum products and all that. The problem with the existing floor now is there's no drain in it, it's just basically a hopped concrete pad with no floor drain, so all the, any spillage drains out into the parking lot, okay? There again, take, take your time and go out there and actually look at it. The front of the building used to have a, a planter in front of it, in such a manner that it has rusted out the entire lower portion of the building that touches the ground. Every time it rains, water and mud gets up inside the office and into the bathroom, and one of the walls, which was actually a door to start with, but a wall was put in on the backside, is caved in, and someone took the foam that turns into a hard, hard foam, insulation foam, and really doctored it up, and that's probably been there for a long time. One of the support, actually two of the support poles on the highway side have actually rotted off underneath the concrete pad, and they are now stabilized to a metal table, which is bolted to the concrete floor inside.
This is so Eureka.
What, what the saving grace of this is, we will deconstruct the pole barn and take it down on the lower level and reconstruct it as a temporary shelter or cover for any of the existing equipment. One of the good things about this new building, should y'all decide to do this, is that we will have a place to put our new sweeper, that's coming in to the tune of about a hundred and forty grand.
Still waiting for it.
Yeah, yeah. So that's basically it. I'll answer any questions I can, if I can answer, yes, sir.
You know, I totally understand your discussion there. I guess my only question is, why are you asking us to waive competitive bidding for a project of this size? And then who's going to do the plumbing, electrical? Is, is that go out to competitive, or because of the price, it's done locally, or, I, I just, if you'll clarify that a little bit more for me.
Yes, Floyd Sales and Construction is the one that did the twenty-three South Fire Department, and they got that one for fifty grand, we got this one for ninety grand. It's structured in such a way that the trusses are called duraframe trusses, and what, instead of a truss that actually comes up and, and you have the middle span that makes the turn and comes to here, you don't have a cross member here. But these are straight up, they're angular, and then they come and meet at the peak.
So they're the only company that can do that, is what you're probably saying?
That's the company within Eureka, within Carroll County. We thought we would keep the money local.
That explains it.
Yeah, and hopefully all the electrical and plumbing will be kept local also, so we're keeping everything in-house here.
Local, I understand now what you're saying.
Yes, yes. Trying to think of something, oh, we will probably also put a maintenance pit in the new flooring, so they can get underneath the vehicles, and if we can, we will put a electric lift or hydraulic lift in there, so they can actually lift everything, yes, sir.
What are you gonna do for heat and air?
It'll have to be, that's, that's all part of this also. There'll be one.
Part of the thirty-five thousand?
Yes, that's what was estimated.
Okay.
Okay. We can still take the one existing working heater out of the two that work in the shop now, reconnect that to the gas pipes, and then we'll have to air condition the front of the office.
The shop itself is not.
The shop is not air conditioned, no. But it is heated.
It does have some heat, yeah.
And we can also configure it in such a way that we can put an exhaust, exhaust fan on either end to blow or suck during the summertime. So it'll be, it'll be a working building that these guys will be proud of, and last us long, long after I'm probably not even here. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, you might also explain the, the issue of time and trying to get this constructed during this season and not having to go through the, the bid process, and that's one of the reasons why I went with this in particular.
Yes, sir. One of the other issues, and let me just throw this in here, is the last time that we had high winds, and I think they were forty to fifty miles an hour, the guys were afraid to stay in the building, because it rattled rocks and rolls, and being a pole barn, not a metal structure, it's wood structure completely, it is, it is a safety hazard, as it is right now. Yes, sir.
Do you know how much will be left in the capital improvement fund after folks meeting this?
No, these, these are figures from Lonnie, he'd sit down and figure it out.
But he's got the money, so we're okay.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. A large part of this, I think seventy percent is coming from the street department side, which.
Oh, is it?
Yes, and thirty percent's coming from capital.
Ah.
So thirty grand, I think. Ms. Snyder.
In view of the timing situation, do we need to do this three times tonight?
That'd be totally up to y'all. The sooner we can get started and get it done, the, the sooner we can get our new sweeper in, in under.
It's written.
A good solid building.
So it's one. Sir.
Well, it's, it's written that we are doing three tonight? Well, it's got an emergency clause, that's what I was wondering.
If you would, if you wait bidding.
Do a motion and read three times.
Go on.
You could go through it once, and then if you wanna do it twice.
Whatever, but.
Go to three.
And it has an emergency clause on it also, yes.
Just wanna make sure we.
I'd like to make a motion to provide this ordinance a number and read it for its first time.
Mr. Second.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for your help.
Thank you, ladies. Okay, made you second it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, stand by.
The ordinance number will be twenty-two-eleven. An ordinance to waive competitive bidding for construction of a new shop building for the Eureka Springs, Arkansas, Public Works Department, whereas the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, the city, is currently in need of a new shop building, and whereas the mayor and director of finance have researched the cost and availability of constructing a new shop building that will allow the public works department to repair vehicles and equipment of the public works department, store equipment, materials and supplies, and whereas Floyd Sales and Construction, Buryville, Arkansas, has submitted its proposal to construct the new shop building with pad at a cost of ninety thousand dollars with plumbing, electrical, and other remaining components compromising the balance of thirty-five thousand dollars, and whereas, because of the serious need to protect the materials and equipment of the public works department, both to complete critical tasks currently ongoing and to prepare for the coming seasons and a prolonged search for the exact blend of experience, quality, and cost effectiveness to complete this project, would put the completion of current projects and especially the ability to plan and equip for the oncoming seasonal needs of the streets and public byways of the City of Eureka Springs in danger. Now therefore be it hereby ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Section one, the requirements for competitive bidding in the cost of the new shop building at a cost of approximately one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars, which includes the cost of the pad, building, plumbing, and electricity and other components, shall hereby be waived. Section two, that the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, shall fund this project with seventy percent street funds and thirty percent general capital funds. Section three, all ordinances and resolutions and parts thereof in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict, and the event that any one or more of the provisions contained in this ordinance shall for any reason be held by a court of competent jurisdiction, to be invalid, illegal, or unenforceable, unenforceable in any respect, such invalidity, illegality, or unenforceability shall not affect the remaining provisions of this ordinance, and this ordinance shall be construed as if such invalid, illegal, or unenforceable provision or provisions had never been contained herein.
Mr. Perkman.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-two-eleven on its first reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. First reading. Mr. DeVito.
I'd like to suspend the rules in place, ordinance number two-two-one, on a second reading by title only.
Second.
Two-two-one-one.
Stand by for a real call.
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Perkman?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. McLenn?
Yep.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Six-zero. Ordinance twenty, oop, okay, ordinance twenty-two-eleven, an ordinance to waive competitive bidding for construction of a new shop building for the Eureka Springs, Arkansas, Public Works Department.
Mr. DeVito.
I'd like to approve ordinance number two-two-one-one on its second reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
What the hell?
Mr. DeVito.
I'd like to suspend the rules in place, ordinance number two-two-one-one, on its third reading by title only.
Second.
Stand by. Stand by.
Mr. McLenn?
Yes.
Mr. Perkupile?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Six zero. Ordinance 2211, an ordinance to waive competitive bidding for construction of a new shop building for the Eureka Springs, Arkansas Public Works Department.
Ms. DeVito.
I'd like to approve ordinance number 2211 on its third reading.
Second.
Stand by.
Yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McLenn?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Six zero.
Ms. DeVito.
I'd like to invoke the emergency clause.
Second?
Second.
Made and seconded. We need a real call on emergency clause?
Yes.
Okay. Stand by.
Ye- yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Perkupile?
Yes.
Mr. McLenn?
Yep.
Six zero.
Thank you very much. Okay. These are the clauses. Do you want me to read it? Emergency clause, section number four, the need to construct a new shop building is immediate and necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of this city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, an emergency is hereby declared to exist and this ordinance shall take full force and effect from and after its passage and approval. Thank you very much. The folks at Public Works, thank you very much. I thank you very much. Uh, this will be a good addition to the city also and it'll be a permanent structure. Like I said, it'll be here till we're not. Yeah.
That could be pretty quick.
Okay. All right. That moves us on to, um, agenda setting. Motion to discuss.
Second.
Second. Floor's open. Miss, uh, Ms. Eller? Let's start on this one.
No, I don't have anything.
Mr. Snyder?
No.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Mr. DeVito?
No.
Mr. McLenn?
We leave the yard waste.
Workshop Wednesday morning.
Is that what it is? Is it part of that? I couldn't remember.
Yeah, so it should be on the next agenda.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Perkupile.
I have nothing.
Okay, thank you. Um, this is all the city council comments. Mr. Perkupile.
Uh, I'd like to thank Dwayne Allen and, and Public Works for dealing with the drainage issue that we had on, Mr. Mayor, what was that, Street, Cliff Street? I believe by-
Uh, by German Alley?
Yeah, German Alley, yes. And they did a, a great job, uh, took care of a situation that was lingering and causing, potentially could cause some damage to a home and the homeowner was very happy about that. Suzie Allen and Suzie Allen was very happy about that, as well as the owner of the particular property that was improved as well. Thank you, guys.
Mr. McLenn?
Nothing.
Ms. DeVito.
Uh, I'd like to congratulate everybody, uh, who received their same-sex marriage licenses in a, uh, fabulous thing that Eureka was the first city in the south to issue marriage licenses for same-sex marriages. I, I know some people were not able to attain it, but this will happen in time. And it's unfortunate that that has been delayed, but, uh, you've come a long way and it's just a matter of a few short weeks and months and, uh, everybody will, uh, get their marriage licenses then. And, uh, congratulations to everybody.
Mr. Mitchell.
Ditto to what, uh, Mr. DeVito said. Eureka Springs, a quirky little town in the mountains in the middle of the Bible Belt and, and sitting out here like it is, has continued to display to the rest of the United States the ability to embrace diversity in all aspects of life and, and to do that in a very peaceful and wonderful manner. And, uh, we invite all of you out there to come visit our little town and check out our diversity.
Ms. Snyder.
Uh, a couple of things. Um, last Wednesday, the chamber had, had its annual tourism photo op. Uh, the mayor and I were there, tons of event, people were there, like, like ziplining and kayaking and all those kind of things. And I found it really, really disturbing and depressing. The mayor and I were the only two official city people there. We had no commissioners, and I'm looking at you two, from the CAPC or anything else, the chamber, no councilman, I'm looking at the rest of y'all. Our city business is tourism. We may add in other things, but we are tourism. This poster goes everywhere. Last year it was huge. This year it was ginormous. It took an hour to get everybody lined up so we could get a proper picture of all the things we have to offer. Everybody's whining and moaning that we only have weekend tourism. My God, do you have any idea how many things we have on a normal stay that if you were here for a week, you still wouldn't get to do it all? And it's because we don't have city people backing these kind of tourism things. Guys, come on, get off your little butts and start doing this stuff. That's the only way we're going to go from weekend tourism to back to a full week visit is highlighting all the myriad things that Eureka has to do.
Did she even ask us?
Ms. Eller?
No, I'm not done, I'm not done.
Oh, you're not done?
That was number one.
Well, you stopped, so.
That was number one, yeah. Uh, I want to congratulate everybody who managed to get a license for the same-sex marriage. I think this is awesome. I think it's incredible. I cried my little eyes out, got to watch some of my favorite people get married, and I am furious with local county people, state people, and plain moronic people. I have been fighting for equality for every kind of equality there is for 50-plus years. I don't want to hear this eventually will get done and gee, I'm sorry for those who couldn't make it, eventually you will. This should have been done decades, if not generations ago. So I would like to make sure everybody understands, first of all, it was not city level, it was county, and it was state. There are steps to take to push this forward. Please do. Everybody is equal and has equal rights to everything and what happened here both Saturday and today is shameful. The ending result, not the beginning result. The marriages were awesome. Congrats, everyone.
Are you finished now?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Eller.
Uh, hopefully all this publicity will encourage sales of the hidden history of Eureka Springs, available at the, uh, local city museum, and they make lots of money every time they sell one of these books.
Okay, that's it. Let me read you a schedule of events. May the 14th is the 9:00 AM workshop, water, and yard waste in my office, or if you can have it up here if you want to. Huh? It's up here then, okay. It is here, okay. May the 15th, the public forum on trails at 6:00 PM in the Ozarks. May the 16th is 24th Annual White Street Walk. May the 17th is Camaro Fest Parade at 5:00 PM. 17th is music in the park. It's in Basin Park, I guess. Yes, okay. The 17th of May Festival Gallery Stroll, 6:00 to 9:00 PM. Uh, 18th is Books in Bloom. 18th at the auditorium is Gaslight at 7:00 PM. Um, the 19th is the hospital commission meeting where everybody wanted to go out and meet the-
Our workshop, yeah.
At 1:00 PM.
I won't be there either.
Okay. 23rd, and, and, uh, let me, let me go back. That'll be at the Echo Clinic. Everybody knows where it's at, okay.
At 1:00.
1:00.
What was the date on that, Mayor, again? I'm sorry.
The 19th.[1708.03]